Okay, welcome everyone to our property subcommittee meeting on the topic. It's to discuss our options for the e-building, options and plans, continued discussion. We have teach architects attending and school officials and the subcommittee members. I guess I'll hand it over to Kevin, jump right in.
Yeah, so I sent in a check to everyone and also a program. And there was some questions kind of like that about the program. We did receive the program descriptions that I sent you, so thank you for putting that together. Based on our original program, I just wanted to kind of confirm some of the things that were either deleted or want to make sure that we had everything complete so that we can kind of move to the next steps of, you know, starting to develop, make more plans for the building.
Just again, your, as you said, the two guys, contract progress, Devin and I were talking about this. Another contract has been going through the hierarchy of bureaucracy with the city. So I know that's the process.
I did, I did.
Yeah, yeah. You did, okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so it's not signed off yet? It's all working through the system still?
I have to confirm with the proceedency at what stage. I do know I received the paperwork, I didn't sign up on it after he goes to.
Okay. Then you're okay with that, Kevin, to move forward?
Yeah, we're not gonna stop progress.
Okay.
I trust that it's going forward.
All right.
The schedule, I do have a slide showing here to this. It's basically the same as last week, but we did push out just eight by weeks and we've just adjusted the schedule to show you that. So we're planning on maintaining our basic schedule that we had. I just want to talk a little bit more about that project funding, just to make sure that we're kind of on the right path here. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we had a discussion at the last meeting about, you know, possible funding from the MSBA. And, you know, based on my knowledge of how they work, you know, the process usually goes through this, you know, you apply for their assistance, you know. They develop a study under their, you know, kind of oversight. And I don't know, I guess, how do you see that going? It's like you have to submit like a statement of interest and, you know, requires this paperwork to be done and submitted and then they accept you into their program. But I don't want to, I don't want to like, you know, stop this process, but I also don't like waste time and money if it's, you know, not for the community's sake. So I just want to kind of understand how those are better, you know, where I guess we are going with all this.
So I think that's a worthy discussion that we need to have as a team right now before we do the next steps. From my perspective, for us to pursue MSBA and to continue the project is not in the school's best interest at this point. As you mentioned Kevin, it's a long process. And a couple variables at play. One is that we have another major building need at some point, and I would say relatively near future that we have to somehow tackle this, which there's no way around having a project without MSBA, which then involves the city as well and some other issues. The other issue that came to light within the last week or so, and I talked to George about it, some of our funding sources right now will lead at grants from the state. One that we just submitted a couple weeks ago, I received notice from the state that they received 15 applications for this, to get the grants. The skills gap, the grant, 30% of the grant may be applied towards renovations. So that's what we're working on, student particle journey of science. We see word that the state has been approached by MSBA to see if the applications involve MSBA or not. So the superintendent who submitted the proposals, we had to respond if we were using MSBA or not. If we were, we'd have to sort of talk about that whole process. Seems to me that those who are gonna rise to the cream of the crop for eligibility around the grants are projects that are not involving MSBA. So my point is, by not pursuing MSBA as a continued project, we are able to tap into the available grant we just submitted. More importantly, there's a grant coming out later in the summer, same skills gap to grant, but more money. And 70% of that particular grant can be applied towards renovation, construction costs. So it's, do we throw away the grants? Could we want to use MSBA? By using MSBA, we've got a bigger project here, but then it really handcuffs us for a larger building project that we haven't. Or do we say, can we go down this road without MSBA involved? Use insurance money, grant money, internal money to tackle? Granted, we're not gonna build a Taj Mahal unfortunately, but can we try to solve an immediate problem and maintain an MSBA eligibility for a bigger project? That's why I'm here today, so.
No, that's, that's a great recap. Thank you, Andy. Really laid it out on the line on all the various issues involved. And I think we need to save our MSBA card for bigger projects. You just explained we have this potential grant money. What about what Senator Comerford offered? Does that seem to be a reality or is that a type dream?
Yeah, so just to highlight, Senator Comerford put in, I think it was $275,000 through one of the bond bills that came out to the senate last week. It is promising from the senate, it was approved. However, I was at the skills gap to grant ceremony this past Friday, talking to a state official at the governor's office, and he was a little disappointed that it actually went through the bond bill. So in essence, for those who aren't familiar with bond bills, legislators have the opportunity to put, allocate some money aside, but then it goes to the governor's desk, it's up to the governor to allocate that money. So if we see the $275,000, great, let's add it. But I'm hopeful, but I don't want it too bad. But again, at the end of the day, and I just want to be honest, $275,000 is a lot. I really truly want to thank Senator Comerford. I'll be on the record, just thank Senator Comerford for advocating for us. But $275,000 in the eyes of a potential, I'm hoping, $5 million project, or what we're gonna look at today, we're looking at a $15 million to $24 million project. $275,000 is not gonna cost too much, so that's new data. But, you know, the reality of it.
Thank you. Tim, where are we at with the insurance company?
They're all set, they're down.
So what was the final report?
Oh, I don't know, I don't know that.
Does anybody know that answer yet?
I don't know.
All right, so those are moving parts, Kevin, so falls back in your court.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, I don't know much of the project, I don't know exactly how much it's gonna cost, but it's gonna cost quite a bit. And like, I want you to have the path forward for that. Okay, so here's the program, and maybe it's just easier to probably look at the one in front of us and kind of talk about that. I just want to make sure we have all the classrooms and shop spaces. And there was pretty good description of the, you know, what I'm calling the agricultural equipment repair shop, that was described pretty well. There was a requirement for two horticultural classrooms. And just talking with Tim, I know that you have also the animal, you know, using the old rep building for classrooms down in that area. And I'm just wondering if there is any possibility of either like maybe using that building as some kind of add-on or adding on to that building, if that makes sense. I don't know, if we can put it out there as an option, or, you know, keeping it up to the same level it's building is right now, which may, in my mind, it makes more sense to put a building up there. You know, is it, does it make sense to, you know, incorporate those classrooms into this new building, just to make it a worthwhile building size? It just seems like two classrooms and, you know, a couple of shop spaces, is that, is that worth expensive to build?
Well, I understand the question. You want, okay, so we need a few extra animal science classrooms, right? Sort of build onto the old GCC building, I think would be a challenge, just utilities down there, sewer lines and stuff.
That's correct.
Sort of put it here somewhere, if there was square footage in the box.
Yeah, I don't know what your intention is for rep building, the classrooms that are going in there, but there's no, you know, look at the old segment, there was any substantial sewer down there, I don't know how you, is there a system, sewer that's pumped up here? But why is it small? Definitely went out much larger than this.
I think constructionally, the best case scenario, we can only get two classrooms into that old building, but we probably gonna need three or four in total. So if we were, the goal at some point would be to have another horticulture instructor, so three classrooms makes sense, but I think a minimum of five would probably be the goal. You agree? Two plus three, probably.
So two in the rep building and a three in the?
Two in the rep building and five in the?
Five is three.
Three plus three would be best case scenario. I don't know if we need the six that was originally, I think proposed. But that's from my.
Okay, and so the five classrooms, are they dedicated to a specific program?
So the three with the horticulture and then two with the companion?
Yeah, they'd be probably just, you know, we can figure that out later. The only difference would be, you know, what they put up there for instructional aids or other things, but the standard classroom, you know, smart board desks, benches or whatever might be put, could figure that out on our notice.
Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I understood, like, the number of lines, because I think what you asked, it wasn't clear in the written description that you could find.
Yeah, well, there, it's different descriptions. You're getting one description from their perspective, yeah.
All right, I just want to, you know, if it, if it's all kind of lumped together, that's, you know, that's more, there's something. So I got, I got an email that had certain description and then we have this written piece and has the.
I'm following you, yeah. I comprehend you.
My one question would be the larger horticultural classroom that we talked about last time. My question would internally to John and Tim would be, knowing or assuming what we've been looking at with the GCC, that there's a larger classroom in there. Is that larger classroom satisfied, indeed satisfied the larger classroom need, or would be, is that not big enough, would we have to build a bigger classroom in the building construction?
Yeah, I know that, it won't be as big as the, as the. So it would, and it would have to be the new room you're gonna make now, because the existing large classroom is just like a long rectangle.
Well, potentially that would stay and we would just be knocking down the front, two offices in observation.
Yeah.
There's a little detail on this, if you're curious to know, with the new building, Kevin, would be five traditional sized standard classrooms. We can get a little bit larger classroom need down, which is the ability for, of the five that are going into the vertical, one of the five, the larger classroom.
Just like a.
Okay. So that's included in here, that would describe the different program as 1,200 square foot space?
So just to keep your spreadsheet going, Kevin, I would say, yes, that one, that means we need four others. Practice doesn't make sense.
Right, so two horticulture and two animal.
Yeah, so your first line, we change it from three to two at 1,000 per total 2,000.
And I'm calling it horticulture shop. It was called dedicated project space, see what's the same thing.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, call whatever you, you want, just make sure that, like, they've described, so everybody kind of understands what it is. And then horticulture shop storage, and then animal science shop. This is something that is, I don't think we have this written from this, the P D program program.
Yeah, their shop is the barns and all the other stuff, so I don't know if they can do it.
Light's coming off.
Yes.
And the other change is the first line, animal science classrooms, regardless of the description, two at 1,000 per room, 2,000. Okay.
Okay, and now the, the equipment repair shop. I have a, my was 3,000 square foot space, if I was able to describe the program.
Correct. Does that need to be three bays? Do we can do it?
I'm looking for a space to put Giles' equipment repair. That was kind of half including that.
Yeah.
Because I didn't think he was gonna be in there like 24/7.
Well, I would, I would make it a separate room, so that he can just be in there and they would, he'd have to be working on something that's gonna take time sitting there, just to be there. So you're proposing the same thing, but two are dedicated over to?
Yeah.
Horticulture.
We were looking at three, the potential of him using two, me using one at the same time, but then also having this, you know, Giles needs to be in, know, use that one space.
Yeah, but you see that, you know, just when things break, they break, you know. If you were able to get dedicated project space, because right now, what you had was overlapping space, right? You got the.
Two different projects.
It doesn't work well. Right, you have the two different garage. So if you have the dedicated project space with the climate, would you really need three, you're proposing three, basically three spaces?
Ideally, yeah.
Three different shops, you count the workspace, the project shop, and then you still have the outdoor garage space, that could be some of the overlap space.
Well, the, some of the overlap space would be storage for stuff that would go, would need to go in, that's separate sort of barn. And that's, for example, now where we practice, hardscaping, the winter we park, we have equipment outside, right, like originally, building, building, housing inside.
All right, can I jump in a second? This is what I'm hearing. These guys would like three spaces of theirs. Tim's indicating he needs a space for the facility equipment repair? Is that how I?
No, we got the barn, we took all the equipment.
Okay, so we have a little conflict here. Doesn't seem like we can probably accommodate all this. Am I on the right path?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, can we get away with two?
Yes. Why do, yeah, I mean, when you look at other programs on campus, they have a single space that's one they use, or they have two spaces, like plumbing has the indoors and then the outdoor scene, they think they can do a secondary project space. I think three spaces, with the cost of this, yeah, I think that's best case wishful thinking. I don't know if it's.
Well, that's what we asked them to do.
I'm not, I'm not.
Yes, yes.
But if you look at this now, I don't, I don't think it's reasonable.
I also didn't know for sure or not whether he wanted a dedicated space for Giles in our shop.
So either.
So that's why I changed what he had written to include it as, you know, if Giles needs it, Giles uses it. When he doesn't need it, we can use it for repair and what.
No, I totally get it.
And then, so that, it was, that's why it was three, but also, like, in the wintertime or something, Jim's working on maintenance on the two piece, a lot of two pieces of equipment with his students, I can still do small engine stuff with my students.
Right.
And that third space, right, with chainsaws and cutters and the small mowers, and that's why there was three bays versus two.
So we're also trying to put the activities we do in places designed, instead of working with gasoline and.
Look at a headhouse.
Yeah.
That's what I used to do.
I'm not.
So that, I, so, and if there's no way we can get that and have a space for Giles, then can we work with two Giles?
Because you still have the outdoor equipment and tool storage, which, you know, I have a suggestion later on that, but you still have, you still have, you'd have the dedicated project climate space if we can get that to work, or that becomes an overlapping space with the larger garage. The outdoor storage equipment space in all the classrooms, the headhouse, there's a lot of dedicated spaces that might have to become multi-purpose spaces.
I mean, if we actually give somewhere, I would give on that. What we don't want to give on, if we can help it, is the dedicated project space, because as we talked about it, one of the issues that comes up with us being an outdoor program, especially like with exploratory in November and December, it's hard for us to do, give them the same experience as the earlier weeks, because if it snows or it's frozen out, we can't do the hardscaping with them, but we can do that inside with them. They can all get the same experience, they can get the climbing experience they could. So that's what we're thinking is.
Yes, once you guys have the dedicated space and the tennis, we have a lot of space.
Well, right, but.
I look at all my programs, we have to focus on.
I understand, but with that dedicated space, we can do more with the kids consistently at, give exploratory kids that time of the fall, where they're actually getting able to climb, because it's raining outside, where they can climb inside, they can do the hardscaping inside, and so they're not freezing, because it's, you know, 15 degrees out.
No, I totally get it. I get where you were coming from and what you asked. Now I'm trying to help shape it to something that's more reasonable and equitable across the campus, and what people have for resources and spaces. So where can we?
Because the other thing too was had, the way we have it set now, all our tools are in the back.
Yeah.
And when we're working on heavy equipment, it's in the front. So having that together is a lot better for the students, for their learning and actually performing the work.
Right, so if we have two large bays, that is for equipment needs and storage, the one bay that's for fart tanks, we have so many overlapping equipment that can become dedicated space, which we currently don't have.
Just a.
And if we were able to maintain the project dedicated space with climate, then you can make that work.
Make work. So just, so Giles is kind of responsible for all the equipment and, you know, his knowledge and experience. It's not just, it's not just the.
Right.
Is everything.
And currently don't have a space for him to be able to service those things regularly, though he goes in and out of Agmac or automotive.
All right, from my knowledge, is Giles a school employee or is he part of the instructor?
Yeah. It's kind of.
Just for point of interest, I know we have Agmac care, repair equipment, they have their shop. You have these guys that need repair equipment for their stuff, and you have Giles to repair equipment. So what have we done with the pass with Giles to make this happen?
Kind of, kind of filled in the gaps, you know, what's our problem, you know, we go take it, take care of it, or valve, take care of it.
Where'd you do that?
Wherever you can find space.
He would go into the Agmac shop.
And the problem with that is it becomes a, well, do they have the space? And then it becomes a little piss and mash.
Who took whose?
So trying to avoid that.
I'm just saying, if we're, if we're, because in the alcoa's discretion, is there any room in Agmac to try and accommodate some of that? I don't know, just throwing that out.
No, because they would, if we did that to Agmac, you'd have one shop with, when you add in all the spaces, has 50,000 square feet spaces in horticulture, and you have Agmac which has, you know, maybe 2,000 square feet with a, and then they're done, because you'd have the whole part of that bay waiting, they wouldn't be able to do it, you'd have feast and famine.
Plus the, the nice football, the program, their gallop, those types of spaces.
Yep, so they're already stretched pretty thin up there.
So the one space of 3,000 square feet. How this all, all works? So if something breaks, that the programs are using, you guys try to fix it yourself, and if you can't, goes over to Giles Arena?
Well, so this position's random, so Giles isn't really gathering up information on, getting inventory of all the equipment, trying to get all the filters and oil. So, I mean, not that we've really talked about, I was kind of envisioning that if he's in there working on the dozer, you're stripping it down, and the kids want to be there working with him, I would think that would work. But if they, but they can't, he'll just, you know, the dozers are back up in front of them, or those are tractors in there, so.
So how long has this person been on staff?
About eight, nine years.
We just created this particular position two years ago. To maintenance and.
More efficient, more.
Have one point contact.
She's really going out.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I'm just trying to get a whole picture of what's going on.
What about the property that we have on the forestry, that big building, which means we have to.
Well, we're done, maintenance is out of there. It's all, maintenance is out of there, you can occupy it. There's no utilities, right?
I'm just saying, we have big buildings.
Yeah, we could rotate, let it through there.
And we have dozers and chainsaws, stuff up there, they have work time.
Right now, it's just a storage, it's very expensive storage. Well, we can, we can store, when we're working up there, we can have our chainsaws in there, we can have the dozer and stuff, but we can't, because we work on stuff, we don't have power, we don't have heat, we don't have, you know, it's not, it's not conducive in January to work on fixing a piece of the wood. But we can use the space for when we're up there to safely store all of our stuff.
Throw, throw. Is what's a lot cheaper, is it put some heat in there, some electricity, or can we?
Yeah, I remember that just became cost prohibitive to run that line up that dirt road, because it came back through the woods. Well, no, no, I talked to, I really don't want to.
I know we tried to.
So we have to put a couple of transpondents to that.
Just put, with stuff out there, I hate seeing empty building and we're working for space.
I think we could put enough solar, not electricity, or you could put solar on nice LED lights.
But that's about it.
So I kind of. So I kind of, that's, we kind of fell back to like, when you're up there and you're working, you get the dozer back on, the kid's train on.
Right.
There's, you're back inside. Well, right. And that's how we're kind of, right. Cause that building originally started out, we were supposed to have a classroom and bathroom. But couldn't get water. The city would have tapped into a water line for us because of the mine. Done by Scotty's. They said it was a transmission line. It's all cut into it. All the houses there are all fed from Uli's garage, from, I don't know, copper tube.
What about the new building that we allowed to see?
Yeah. Yep. And you would think everything's changed now since I at least get water up there. It would still be a hell of a run, you know?
No, I understand. I understand. And I'm, I'm working on options.
I think, from my perspective, constructionally, that area, if we are, if this is cost prohibitive to have this much space. And if the project and climbing space is overlapping space, that area could be freed up by cycling. We do with the animals now. We cycle the animals out to different properties for different things to free up space. The equipment could be moved in the wintertime to free up space, certain equipment. And then you would have them in a cable space and it wouldn't be outside. It would be protected from the elements and then. So that, that might be able to, beyond just when they're up there using it as a home base. We could use it as a way to cycle equipment around, free up space for, for structure.
We do store some stuff up there when we're on use.
Yeah.
Just to get free up space already.
Okay.
Now we have more up there, which is we have.
How, how big is that forestry building up there?
Probably equivalent of four bay garage.
Thirty nine seventy?
Yes.
So twenty one hundred square feet there.
Good size. That's nice.
Right, the carpentry building.
Yep.
Correct, right. And is that? That Smithville property, correct? It's been that way for a long time. It was never VA or whatever.
It was VA, but I thought it was.
Okay, so, um, this conversation about this building somewhat delts tales into what we're doing here today. Due to our space limitation. Um, so you have a water, water issue. Now, the city did, what did they do there?
Well, they put in, uh, pressure situation because there weren't enough pressure coming down off the mowers. So they added enough pressure.
Okay. So then there's possible conversation with the city of getting this water. But you're saying, Tim, it would be quite. It's a long.
Wrong, it's a wrong way.
Okay, now, the power requirement, would anybody, any discussion of a generator with propane tank up there?
I never, never thought of it. There's a conduit that goes from the pole to the cell tower. Dedicated for us. They put it in if we ever want to go up that mountain.
So we have a line that we could pull power from, from the street?
About two thirds of the way up.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks. For future discussion.
Options, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Kevin. I think it's all part of the process.
Oh, absolutely. Let's go through this.
Being the senior statesman and the oldest trustee, I have a collection of what we have. So I want to bring it to, for like to, as a reminder, the other main trustees don't worry about it.
Okay, so circling back to the program here, we ended up with two bays instead of three. Is that where?
I think, I think you're gonna keep it. It's just gonna be how we divvy it up when it goes.
One will be a, one will be a separate bay from the other two. Separated by toll off.
Or, but the other two, would they have their independent door within just one big space or two? Okay.
Okay, all right. The tool crib and the storage, I think those were directly on the program. Locker rooms. I understand kind of what you're looking for. You're looking for a separate room. It's kind of get a part of the shop and a part of the hallway. So we'll figure that out once we start getting to a floor plan.
Yeah, but I think it's like three lockers. Unless we get spanned, right?
Correct.
Well, like you said, if you're thinking about forty years down the road, it's just a small building. Bring in another instructor and dedicate to get increased.
That's always the growth, so. I, I wasn't sure how model would be. I mean, if we have one more teacher, are we still only gonna have twelve in ninth and tenth grade? And then provide them out or if we're gonna, or reload ninth and tenth grades? Then it would be more than forty.
Yep.
Perfect. Is that number, that be needed? Can animal in there? Does that take care of that?
No, I think, I think we're gonna have to think about that. I think if the lockers move, how much space do we have? I think we have enough space in the back of that, of the old building. The rest of the new wing would be the new way in the science building.
To, to put everything.
I think we can get more lockers than we'll be currently on. That's great. So we'd have to measure and ensure to handle their size.
Yeah.
To, to handle their increase. So we should just think about lockers for porticoes, go and handle science and do lockers.
I think so.
I think so, yeah.
But this, this number looks okay.
Yes.
I bumped that up a little bit just to make it modular.
Nope, no, it's good. I just wanted to hear the thought process.
Okay, outdoor equipment, tool storage. So are we still on with this one or is this?
I, my only feedback on this would be, uh, if it's cost prohibitive, that this becomes a separate project. That we use shops for on campus. And I will be able to do it as a separate project.
So this being outdoor.
Because it's already separated from the building.
Correct.
By outdoor. Is that what that means? Outdoor equipment and storage? You're talking about a separate.
It's similar to what?
This outdoor, what you access.
Was that the thirty? I think that was more, if that's coming off of our write-up, that would be like required for.
So has an annex off the building?
Yeah.
But if we were able to do that, carpentry and reduce costs.
Yeah, we can. I mean, I don't know. I mean, absolutely.
Or if we come into a problem and we had because we couldn't tie in the, you know, there are no fire alarms going off. Cause that's just the, so it'd make more sense to happen.
It, it was just, that's for all that small equipment that.
Yeah.
Needs to be stored somewhere.
I don't have a problem at all with, in, in the plan. I just question if there's a.
So that would be something you could still put on the plan?
Yeah.
That, and not leave that out of the construction business, right? You'd say, hey, the kids, if you get tagged, you can tag on for a fire alarm. Then there's no free water.
Yeah, I mean, if the district's realistically looking at three to five million dollars to spend on a building and this is tracking at fifteen to twenty-four.
The other thing too.
Four to five times. That's right.
That, that doesn't necessarily have to be attached. Like, I know you're talking about over by the horse brow for the equipment. If you have one that was enclosed and secured to house all that stuff, like the shovels, the rigs, the.
Right, to light yourself that we didn't.
It doesn't have to be heated. It just, you know, lights would be nice, but we should be able to get access to all of our tools.
Sure. Electricity and, and, and store, yeah.
Yeah. That, that's all that has to be. So that can be put wherever. You can put it down the road, it won't be out to my family.
Okay.
So that's all that is.
It's just my questions around that.
All right, so potentially that would be an in-house project.
Things. Still on, still here. Yeah, but, but construction wise. And we, yeah, the only, the only thing I'm thinking about this is that we're gonna have like, you know, we're gonna look at some site visions after, but, you know, we are thinking about a certain sort of quick for the shops and classrooms. Although like, you know, lumber, we have like a basement floor which could be the, you know, the equipment repair shops. But the way it's, the way the hillside is, there's like only a certain amount of access. Unless we start taking up massive amounts of soil, access to the, the side of the building at the basement level. So it's just, you can kind of consider that, you know, it's probably enough of the equipment, you know, repair shop. Over indoors, they want that, putting the, the, you know, equipment storage there. Probably isn't more.
Yeah, but there's. There's other spots they're talking about. So if we, if we did have it as a separate outbuilding that would go, so we have more flexibility on where it goes versus the space. So it might help with that.
That, you'll probably see a correlation between the three thousand square feet of, three bays for equipment and the similarity of the classrooms. We're kind of figuring out which one will hold that. And so greenhouse, uh, I have it kind of separated into, I don't know, there is a separate like use for.
There is.
Yes. So is this correct? One is high, the other one is.
Right.
That was probably right in here. And the headhouse, um, so I guess, how do you see this being used? I know that there's, um, just quite discussion to it. You know, there's some issues with security on the campus. There's, you know, but there's also a need for like the retail.
Yeah, we, we had hoped you might, you, we created first, we could come up with a solution. Whether it be the exterior door that customers can enter, a kind of defined space. Do interactive students where that happens. Um, but it's not something that like.
It would probably be attached to the headhouse.
Yeah, that's how we envisioned it.
Yeah, I would, I, that's not a problem. It's more like inviting people onto the campus that.
Well, we, yeah, well, we'll take you there. It was a process for that, specific times of day or that. I think their point about having it, to be able to have an external access.
So you want to limit customers.
Interaction.
Like they come to our restaurant, you know, it's kind of defined space. So that's, that's, that answers your question.
It does.
Yeah.
So are you looking for like parking to associate with this little space? You would need it otherwise because you have your.
Yeah, I think if you looked at the existing spot, if there was a way to, but I don't know what, some of the trees in the way. Parking currently is what's down there already. So, you know, we'd have to knock down that, well, red storage barn will come down. That becomes parking. If you look at it back to your photo.
Back to your. You would have a parking at the upper side.
You would either have it on the upper side or you'd have to have it on the lower side.
Yeah, we kind of visioned it if we tore down, the park was still using down the road. That would be a parking spot, maybe like the front door. Work if that works with your design. And that would also allow us to take some showcase landscape stuff from.
Well, then that wouldn't be incorporated most likely with the headhouse and the greenhouse. But, right, cause the, I don't know how you can, unless you design, you're using that, so you're thinking that's base for bays and garages.
Yeah, just some burly.
It doesn't have to be connected. I'm not saying.
Over this one. This is just kind of a footprint. It doesn't mean anything. It's more just to try and define an area. You know, that we're kind of looking at.
Yeah.
So, you know, just think about what, what we're talking about here. You know, the, I think the greenhouses would kind of be at this upper side here. The headhouse would be at this end. We may get some parking up here.
That was one of the spots I was thinking.
Yeah. And then down here would be the, um, the quick thing for air garage. You have to follow that one kind of be handled.
And I think James, see where you have that, uh, it looks like an entrance at the corner? I think that's the spot he was thinking. And then it wouldn't have to be connected to the headhouses. I think if you wanted it connected to the headhouses, then you'd have it at the, uh, upper first area that you pointed at.
Yeah.
It's not connected.
Parking and the landscape showcased.
Do you give it on that side or? Just talking about the retail space.
Well, it's a little. What you did there is a little different like your initial one. And also we thought about if we had to build a building behind what's currently still there, we would use that, that, that space. When the rest of them demolish that space, we're available. That's, that's what we're thinking.
Yeah, I mean, this shows everything kind of, well, I think we're still in the mid twenty thousand square foot range for the building. So this does have a little bit more.
So the upper part would be two stories and the lower part would just be the bays.
Right.
Yeah, I think that could be a really nice spot. It comes in, so it's where the existing red barn storages, that comes down. Be the top of the photo.
Yeah.
If, if the greenhouses came off the back, that top photo, if the headhouse and the retail space was there, you could, they could create a parking and you could do, James was talking about having a landscape showcases and unconnected corner. Versus the front.
Yeah, but at the front, it would be, it would become more of a security issue with the intermainline between students and visitors.
All right, question. Somebody explain to me definition of a headhouse.
So a room attached to a greenhouse where you prepare plants that are letting you go into the greenhouse.
So a prep room.
Prep room, right.
Instead of the head of the greenhouse.
Okay. No, thank you. Okay.
I heard you say condos.
Well, all right, so. A area for greenhouse. Is that a good definition?
Yep.
An area for greenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we have the headhouse storage walking toward her, for the headhouse. And then the retail space is part of that, part of that.
Yeah.
Okay, now, um, getting down to the instructor's office areas. We had, um, eight to begin with, based on the original programs. So we're talking about just five now.
Probably three.
Yeah, they in science. They're gonna have office space in that other building. So I don't think they would need it in there.
So for these three directly associated with the shop spaces, it could be actually part of those. Can built within them or do you want them separated? I've not seen them incorporated.
It would be good if they were together. Like, that's like where we commune with each other. But on newer buildings, they have like, you know, glass windows that overlook the shop space, student management.
If they could be, if they could be on the second floor, where the classrooms are with staircase into that two bay garage or the dedicated project space, if there's a way those two areas link, where they would be able to have glass that come down over. That would probably be good if I'm explaining that right, best case scenario.
Yeah, there's just an accessibility issue with that. You know, I know maybe realistically you wouldn't have instructor with a disability. You can't design a building with discounting that.
Well, no, you would have both because you would have access from the classroom level. You'd also have access from the shop level with the staircase. So Pathfinder has a great setup where many of their shops actually have that. And so.
But they have an elevator? But that's not, that's.
Wait, or, okay, last visit, you said it wouldn't be an issue with things because you had access from the ground floor.
Correct. So if, but I'm just thinking of, you know, the, if a instructor had a disability, he wouldn't want to have to go outside around to get that.
All right, so what's, maybe I'm misunderstanding your design then. On that drawing.
Yeah.
You're having bays cut into the hillside, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when we talked about the classrooms, you had said there wouldn't have to be a elevator at our last meeting because there would be ground floor access from higher up. Is that still?
Right. You would have stairs inside, we'd have something to use a stair again. But, you know, if you have a person with a disability, that person won't have to go.
Outside would not need that. Okay. Well, you said it was okay for the students, but it's not okay for staff.
No, it's not okay for, I mean, if you can do that, it's just a really convenient thing to make house.
Okay. I didn't get that from what you said last time. Last time you had said if there was ground floor access, it wouldn't.
You're not required to have an elevator.
Yeah.
But for convenience sake.
Okay.
It's better to have one.
So how do we solve that for the students in the classrooms and? How do we, how do we solve ours? You're more, we're more likely, I mean, you're gonna, you potentially could have a person with disabilities in, in either category, students or staff. So how do we solve that problem?
Right. I was thinking that the agricultural repairs garage would be a separate program. And so people wouldn't be necessarily like using both floors. So have a separate kind of area for the students and staff.
Got you.
For that one program. Well, that's, that's just part of our program. Like a landscaper is going to maintain their equipment. That's, that's what that space is for. And our equipment is bushmowers, tree trimmers, chainsaws to heavy equipment.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to offer opportunities, you know.
So.
The, the code is.
Okay. So then we would have to put an elevator in this building?
If you.
Cause they're gonna, they're gonna.
Give you access, yes.
Yeah, because our students and, I get, I misunderstood you in the last meeting, but our students and staff are gonna access all floors.
Yeah.
Within the same program.
I'm, I'm, I try to be really cost efficient with my suggestions, you know, and, you know, elevators are expensive. So if we can avoid it, that would be great. You know, it sounds like the program is very integrated, you know, the two pieces.
Yeah.
So it would make more sense to put one in there.
Okay.
Or whatever.
The last time we looked at something, I think they poured us a quarter million dollars. But you're building that though, chain shaft.
I mean, so, so, you know, maybe, maybe we do look at just a one story building, which you can everything on one floor. And, you know, we have some basement area for that portion of storage. You know, that's all, that's all that goes in the basement. Because it sounds like that's the thing, you know, it's separate.
Yeah, you definitely make that access for things.
Maybe if we went to only one floor level and maintained the classrooms, right, obviously the footprint gets larger, but though. How much flexibility do we have with the existing, you know, roads that we have? We can move those around. To any staff.
I mean, what's nice about right now is that getting emergency vehicles.
Right.
Hey, you could, what you were suggesting was all one floor, it's a classroom could be over a basement storage space where the elevation changes. And that's just access from the outside, which is what it is now.
Right.
You know, it's just dead storage, receipts and stuff. Which might be better for you.
So you have the classrooms, the shop spaces, the greenhouse, and underneath would be storage that you have to go out and access from outside.
Which would do anyways. Right. We just have to go down. For two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you can build a lot. Well, storage space.
So I'm sorry if I, if I. Play. You were scared in there.
Oh, no worries. And they could just go to work it out.
And you can't put. Like I know at Pathfinder, they have from the main entrance up to the academics, they have a full down wheelchair ramp, um, elevator. You couldn't put that in.
They're very specific about.
Yes, but it's for, but it's for a wheelchair.
Yeah, in this condition, I don't think that we can let that. It may have been a very specific, you know. Was it a full story? Usually if it's a full story, then I'll do that. If it's a half story.
It's a half story.
I think it might be.
You can walk in, you can walk down, like a raised range inside.
Yeah.
There's probably an after that.
Actually, they have two because you go down.
To the gym.
You go down by the gym, there's an academic wing. They have one there and then to go up to the second floor of the academic wing.
Yeah.
Outside, yeah. It's a bigger staircase, but I don't think it's on four.
Okay. For us, it's just kind of like toilet, staff toilet. Staff toilet as a cover fire that's separate from.
Let's do enough. That was one of them. I hope we get one just. Remember your purpose.
And the utility.
Yeah, so like the utilities.
Those P also boiler, but. Power. Um, and then some of the IT stuff. Yeah.
And it's not where it gets covered in sand dust and stuff like that?
No. Okay, so, um, yeah, we'll, so I'll update this, um, send it back around for, um, sign off or whatever. Here we get the report with, um, and the. So this is the footprint of the existing building. It's about eight thousand square feet. The way, the way it's gonna sit in, including all the greenhouses and.
That's the total footprint?
This is the total footprint. So there's the greenhouse here. It's the part that's like, that's burned. As, one second, there's like, there are four heights for, for most of them. Like this height would be probably the most ideal. It's like out here, it's about, um, two thirty. And I, this was more of a conversation about, you know, getting this floor to work with a basement level down below here. So, you know, if we're having everything on one floor, you know, I think cost wise, it's probably going to be the, the most cost efficient to do on one floor building. And we can do a small basement under a portion of it. The way, for reasons, I was started looking at this as like point utilities you have on site, you're blocking cap in too. So we do have a eight inch water line that comes down, you know, behind going on a beach. And, you know, we can tap off that for sprinklers and, and. I think somebody told me that you have pretty good water pressure here. So should be enough for a sprinkler and domestic water service. You do have a four inch sanitary line that comes out of here, right, and something bigger than that, like turns into a eight inch line. Once it gets to the manhole down on the side of the building bait. So we'll have to like do a trench out and then go down for a couple seconds. We'll have to put in, you know, I don't know what you have for power in this building. But, you know, you need to upgrade that, that.
I assume there's water service there currently.
Yeah.
So.
This is, it's just water service. Into the building.
Sprinklers.
But you would need to increase it.
So for the sprinklers.
Okay.
It has to be a dedicated one. It would be the combination of domestic and sprinkler. Two separate surfaces. Could potentially tap off the main line, two separate lines, right?
Yeah.
This building B doesn't have sprinklers.
And right there, we have one. And typically, when you get a campus like this, you know, you consider one fit building having fire and a ton of multiple buildings. So it should be sufficient to tap on that one line. And I noticed down here, you had a transformer or some kind of a box that power comes out of.
Television panel.
So I don't know what, we'll have to look further at the, you know, capacity of what's here. And, you know, figuring out what would be for this building. I did talk to a, say, civil engineer and a chemical, chemical engineer about this. Gets some input. So for, um, I don't know, we have in the garage space right now, you have like exhaust, exhaust, um, you know, system that ties on to exhaust plants or whatever. So is, what do you want to see there? Is it, is it something that you want to have, like a? Yeah, like you can have it just take air.
So like in.
Take an air out of the space.
In B, this whole, this whole shop exhaust that dropped down, they could pull it out, but then depending on what the shop is, they have specific exhaust systems built around the door. That whole place is built out of spare parts, so. There's nothing to go, I don't think, to go back to. We definitely want that if they're gonna run stuff inside.
Right.
Have gasoline, you know, and want to make that.
Okay, yeah, we'll look at that further. And then for the, uh, for the garage base, we'll need like the drains or the oil bar separators and all that stuff. So just kind of leave it considered. What's that?
Eighteen hundred seater.
Yeah, so I, I guess, you know, any, any questions or comments on this? You know, the micro and IT part would be the, the challenge. I agree.
So I'm assuming we put natural gas or fuel.
For the fuel. Um, go ahead. True. Yeah. I think about that part. Do you have that, um, on campus already?
Yeah, I mean, there is, it goes to the, I can imagine the line that goes to the G C C building big enough, so it has to come off the, the corner of B building. Don't say B, the corner. So that big, that's where you get there on the opposite corner.
So down.
No, the other way, go up for it, yeah.
Yeah.
This is more, yeah, it comes there. Or we come off back at this building. So how are we tealed current oil?
Yeah. Two, uh, five hundred gallon above. Um, I mean, I guess we can look at it both ways. But, yeah, it'd be better if we didn't actually ask. Just put together some, at some point, looking for, at different agricultural, um, you know, vocational schools. Found something that just, I just kind of want to get your reactions to these as, you know, I don't want to make it drool or anything. But there's, yeah.
There's Bill Essex or Norfolk one.
I don't, I don't remember which ones they were, but, you know, it's, it's, they're nice. They have like natural light. They have like these grease systems that's kind of heavy utilities that drop down. Like you can see these outlets that kind of drop in on from the ceiling. That would be, you know, great to have, kind of making the spaces really efficient and flexible to use for multiple purposes.
So those whole like housing slides on the track, which go anywhere.
Yeah.
Just drops, right?
So I don't have to care if anything, you know.
Yeah.
It's extensive or, you know, it's complicated system.
They are kinetic. Birds fly. It's not a big mall, but.
No, all the great was on here.
But this is how, this is what they use for their, for their climbing structure, you know, there. I don't know if you've seen it before.
I have pictures on my phone.
Yeah. But you're looking for something that was actually taller and see like, because this doesn't, this definitely, not thirty five feet.
I mean, that's good for basic construction, but if we're trying to give kids an experience of climbing and it's snowing or raining out. We could go higher in one, on one or two ropes. That would be good. The other, that's why we said like a tower in the middle or where the peak is, where they can go up maybe thirty feet. But lower down, further out, they can do stuff like that, where it's just practicing tying, testing their knots.
Right.
So are you looking for some kind of structure like that?
It would be more any or structure.
It's more like along the wall. So it'd be like a such a rock gym where they have.
Yeah.
Stations along the wall. We would have stations along the wall where they would put the rope over. They would tie their knots. They would practice climbing, but then have the taller section for actually going up like a tree.
Yeah, it looks like they have the, have the drop down exhaust. So like the.
Probably air.
That's it?
Air. For pressure. Uh, for servicing. Yes, with the air, air, air machine.
Yeah. Yeah, when he was indicating. Kaling was also an exhaust.
Right.
So they had a platform outside there. Equipment the things just for doing things outdoors as well as, yeah. So we had to talk about that. It's like, maybe there's something to, you know, put out there. You know, this kind of brings up another question about, you know, how do you, how do you work sustainable, like agricultural, you know, thought into your program? And is that something that is kind of built into the design that, that is done? I'm just kind of thinking about that because it seems like. No, but, you know, I'm not trying to like push like lead, lead or anything like that. I'm just saying that, you know, I assume that, you know, agricultural, you know, instruction or academics incorporates, you know, it's just common sense, you know. Uh, sustainability, you know, in how things get taught. Just kind of wanted to, you know, ask about that, you know, what your thoughts are.
I mean, we try and do a little, you know, some sustainability with them, but we're not doing as much as.
Right. Yeah, it's not just green roofs. It's like water management and, you know. Storage.
Haven't thought a lot about.
I think it could be incorporated.
Right.
Into greenhouses.
We could absolutely teach it.
Absolutely. I mean, there's not a lot of crop production in Massachusetts framework, so around sustainable agriculture for crop production.
Yeah.
But as far as, you know, sustainability within the agricultural programs and greenhouses, if it could be incorporated, I think it would be a positive.
I mean, I know that's a small outdoor roof garden. Uh, these glass windows that you can look out to see there. I mean, if we use small scales, sustainability for green roofs. Which that, that they're probably using to, you know, down below, they've got the water runoff from the roof, um, a dry riverbed for, for that. I mean, yeah, that could all be incorporated as something we could, we could teach the kids. We just haven't done that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I talk about it in landscape design. I talk about.
But if we had examples of it.
Do it, right, we haven't done it yet. Or there's, there's not the framework. Well, I said, that's not really key in our framework, but, um, it's just teaching in landscape design. What we teach them is, I think we should incorporate sustainability.
Back to Jim, back to Jim's. Building designing a building that we can use. That's gonna get both from landscape programs at some point.
Right.
You guys revise it.
Yeah.
It's gonna get it.
So you design some pot water or maybe infrastructure or.
Oh, right.
That you could teach and show as examples.
So I, I know what there is. They have some interesting collecting the roof water and have it, the way it comes down and how we have that. We could then design and build with the kids that, with the rainwater garden. Or have the structure with the drainage for a roof garden, small space. That would be ideal as well, but I don't want to store it.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't restaurant need to be on a roof?
Right, no, that's how we could do outside also. We have something that carpentry can build.
And a lot of cities are putting in those sustainable agents now where they.
Right. But I'm thinking like if we were to do a mockup for a roof garden, sustain, for sustainability that way with the green rooms. They could, between carpentry and plumbing, it's like we can build something that the kids could then, you know, install, but it was at the ground level.
Downline, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Besides you have the infrastructure to support that area.
Joe, when you're, because of your whole infrastructure and what you're talking about here, the leadership side of that, when other schools come to look at our school, avoid the leader. They went through damn, which we had to. Almost the time they were.
Thank you, I agree. I think it's gonna be in the frameworks that next time it comes around. It's just, that's sort of sustainable. And as you can look at what's happening in Southwest, we're paying people to turn grass into, you know, your lawn area into, uh, more zero escaping and sustainable plants and things like that that are more natural for the habitat. I think it's gonna be important.
Well, it's gotta be thought about as we are moving forward, when we go to construction. Can we put taller panels on?
If there's opportunities to kind of build in educational, you know, ability into the building, you know, by putting things like this in. And it's only gonna benefit.
If we're having a.
Maybe.
Tool purpose, I don't have much more of B, but if we're having a more of a clap versus a peep. Do we put an area on there that's not too expensive to put integrated?
There's a good example of a green roof locally. It's a Stile Eltron building number five by R K Miles. That big warehouse building we built some years ago and that's got a green looking roof.
So from an instructional management side, right, my first concern is back to your access question.
Right.
Being able to access that, right? And the other thing is being, it's, uh, maintenance plan and cost of maintaining and.
Well, and I think the infrastructure for supporting it changes too.
Right.
Right.
So that increases the cost.
So for, if the student experience can be the same because the infrastructure was built into actually replicating at a ground level? Because the water could come down and we can, we can mimic and they can learn how to do it there. That's more the educational part of the structure. It makes more sense than having the whole thing be something that we have to maintain.
Yeah.
You know, for pointers.
Guess you know, I served in some college.
That really, it almost looks like a private school in some ways.
A primary facility.
Still.
I would say.
That's what I saw from the outside view, and it just looked like not a public school. Yeah, being unfair. Some high ceiling areas that would kind of incorporate, you know, kind of allows more flexibility for use rather than having like just a low, you know, rope drop ceilings or something like this. Plus, if we can save money on ceilings or whatever.
If, if, you know, the dedicated private space that you're talking about where, you know, one side of it doesn't need to be thirty-five feet, the other side can be, you know, more standard, like ten feet are going to be acceptable. Pitch roof like that, or that being built into, or the existing design, that might be a great space, cause you can have the climbing on one end and you can have the real project space on the other side.
Very bad. In, in the garage spaces, do you have like lifts that will need to get built in or?
We do not, I mean, I think it's, you know, we don't have.
But I think smaller ones for the lawn or.
Right. Zero turn and something like that would be nice to have. Now, they also make portable ones too.
But would that one Kyle has for the zero turn, the big one? I mean, it works functionally, just, I get, I get it, so.
Cause I know Dave Traver said there was one out of the barn, like a portable type.
Yeah.
For that, is that what you're talking about?
Oh, yeah.
The ones you might use to answer your question, would, you know, pick a lawn mower floor, it's a part of the chestnut. Like a bottom lip that's gonna be able to twenty feet wide.
Yeah.
So the whole ready, clean job is necessary.
Job. So they're all portable.
Yeah.
Portable type.
Yeah, wouldn't be any of you.
Building thing from here.
The universal is counted, because it's.
Different likes a little bit. So I'm like, I, I show this, cause it has like traditional, like building materials that you might see in like agricultural setting. So I thought it was interesting, only the kind of incorporated school colors and materials together.
I think aesthetically, we probably wanted to tie it down there. We're looking to cheese the barns in some steel, uh, right, or the steel. Some like coordinated steel over the old barns to update them and, you know, to become more sustainable, so that fitted to the landscape of that area to be smart.
Yeah. That was their thinking here. So natural materials, you know, daylight photos. Display areas inside. But, you know, they were pretty, you know, open as far as like showing the utility lines in the building, you know, so. Some people might think that is unsightly, but that's what, that's what a seed building is, it's all.
It's beautiful. She preferred that.
Easy access. Yeah, while they say mud here, and then it's meant that all the wood ceiling here. So just wanted to kind of get, get thoughts on, off of this.
Teasers.
You know, you, I think, you know, you're gonna have a new building when you're, when you're done, you know, if all works out, it's gonna be, you know, a nice little building. So, um, I think, you know, that's, um, pretty much all I have, you know, like, like I said before, we will update the program and we'll get started with some floor plan ideas. And, uh, you know, we don't usually like jump right into like a plan, we probably put together like a adjacency diagram, so like, you know, we have like bubbles of spaces and kind of want to feel like, you know, what, what goes next and other things. And maybe we can get that done quickly, send it out for everybody's, you know, kind of comments and, uh, or do you feel comfortable with that? I don't know, floor plans are a little bit easier to digest, and, uh, like if a bubble diagram, kind of with just lines and back end things, you can kind of see what we're, how we're kind of interpreting what your comments.
I think that's the logical next step.
Yes.
All right, but I have a question. I'm a little confused about the square footage, no, not a little, I am a lot confused about the square footage. Okay, we have Andy's, uh, original report June seventh about the possible type of what we can do here, option one, two, and three. Uh, rebuild damaged back garage office and one classroom, basically three thousand square feet of rebuild. Okay, rebuild entire E-building, maintain total square footage, sixty-five hundred square feet. And then option three, let's roll in the dice and all, you know, increase total square footage. So you talk, the existing building E-complex is approximately eight thousand square feet, correct?
So I have the same question.
Okay, so, hold on, is that right, Kevin?
Yeah.
Building needs approximately eight, this spreadsheet that you took, that you took from their thoughts and wishlist items, total program area, thirty-one hundred, thirty, thirty-one thousand square feet. Then there is some number, fifteen thousand square feet thrown around somewhere, I'm confused.
The, the fifteen thousand was just identifying, you know, that was from the footprint of the building, you know, kind of off the site. It was just identifying the space on the site.
Okay.
Kind of give you an idea of how much.
What we have to work with potentially?
Yeah, I mean, we probably have more, and we have other options too.
Okay.
That probably, that one space. So, I mean, this is adding up all the different spaces that we're, that we're looking at, you know, we can make them more efficient, and then adding on thirty percent, you know, circulation, mechanical space, bathrooms and all that at the end. So, you know, it's, it's based on, you know, what you're, what you're telling us that you need.
Understood. But what we need, I don't see how we can afford. Is that where you're going, to give your thought process to Andy?
That's where I've been for the last couple. I just wanna make sure that we're on the same page, so, Tim, you provided, my square footage came from the document you prepared. I just added it up, that's where the sixty-four groups of change and square footage. So whether sixty-four hundred or eight thousand square feet, that's the ballpark that we currently have. After the discussions this morning, we went from that thirty-one thousand square foot last year. Sphere of change for square footage down to now we're just shy of twenty-eight thousand, we want maybe do something class. So right now we're at twenty-eight thousand square foot range, which again is still much larger than we currently have. And I was running the numbers at the same time, based on the construction costs that have been shared with us throughout the process. Including the greenhouses, we rebuilt the greenhouses, we're still looking at almost fourteen to twenty-two million dollar garage space. It seems like a good range. So, yeah, I'm still just saying. If we, if we say we're not gonna touch the greenhouses, and we had removed those, and say we need to work around the greenhouses, we're down to just shy of twenty-five thousand square feet, which is still a twelve to nineteen million dollar project. Which is still.
I think we could get away with only doing one greenhouse and then the roof house and utilizing it. You have to take, you have to do the twenty-five hundred dedicated project space, and it'd have to become double space for the garages, but that would be more important to build the outside storage, the equipment storage and garage, almost to redo what is burned. So we have to, that would still have to be an in-house project, I think would put more pressure on us to have to do it sooner, because they're gonna eat that space. But you, you could also break that at the cost.
We're gonna struggle to come up with five million dollars without, as including, as assuming we get these two permits, that's not going to the city, that's not going to the SBA, that's not, that's just internally, what can we do with insurance money and grant money? We will struggle to buy mine. Do I give the board and ask for tuition revolving above and beyond, how much tuition revolving do we have? It's just by shy of two million dollars.
That's another discussion.
Well, I just, I don't wanna be the Debbie Downer, I'm just.
We have to be a realist too. Of course, we'd love to do what, something like that, but it doesn't seem to be a reality, and that's just what this process is showing us. And that's why we need to engage in this and, uh, why we're doing it, plain and simple.
Tim, don't have a heart attack, and I don't ask this, but Kevin, is it hard to add, we're building on this part, so we already have. Like we have a cement block classroom, you know?
It would be difficult to help create those buildings, you know, if you start adding on to them and, and improving them, then they're gonna want you to spread them.
Yeah, you can get code compliance stuffs that get triggered by like the cost.
It, it does, you know, with the different floor heights, you know, and accessibility and, you know, all the utility upgrades that you would need to put in. What, what square footage costs very good?
I, I've been told to use between five hundred and eighty dollars. I hope it's a lot.
I, I thought it was a lot, but I'm not in tune with.
More efficiently, you know, you know, if, if MSBA is not involved in this, then, you know, we can, you know.
Would you?
We have more freedom and flexibility to, you know, adjust the square footages and, you know, the classrooms don't necessarily need to be a thousand. Is that ideal, yes, could maybe eight hundred, that, that's okay.
Well, and I look at what we probably have, six hundred current, so going from six to a thousand is like, whoa, we have two. We probably don't need to go, go to eight hundred, you know, or, no, I mean, again, it depends on the size of our classes, but.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe we just go through a process, we'll update this, and then maybe we can circle back around on some of these program areas to reduce them.
All right, Kevin, what would your best guess or educated knowledge of square foot price be? Or engineered metal building, whatever.
Costs have gone up recently, I don't know what's gonna happen with them going back down.
It could go down anytime soon.
Never know, by, by the time we get to the point where you're constructing, maybe we'll be in a better place. But probably four hundred.
You think around four hundred?
That's, that's, uh, standard MSBA constructed building is probably between four and four fifty, right?
More, more open your type of environment without finished ceilings and that sort of.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll look at top communities for saving money, you know, we don't need a ceiling. And look, put in some structure first, put like fixtures if, if we can.
What I saw, that was Bristol, correct, that facility?
Exactly, yeah.
Um, that was all just, uh, was really no ceilings at all, and, and just holding air space and, and, um, probably fully sprinkled, right?
Yeah.
And that's. And then the, the roof structures, you've got the upgrade and the, the roof insulation, so that they now are thirty for code requirement. So you're able to.
Okay, all right.
You be answered, Mike, thank you.
Yeah, so the square footage number that you had cotton, where was that from, was that from a contractor?
That was from the state, uh, who oversees the skill staff, we have projects, they're gonna use that. According to that, that's what they would use.
They have. You know, probably more recently, up towards a higher, a higher number. I think that we avoid MSBA and their standards, I don't know if I'm saying that we're not gonna be good standards here. Right, I'm just saying that, you know, the process of the MSBA and probably set itself for, that's the way I come at it, is it blows the costs really out of the water.
And it adds a lot of fatigue, but it potentially eliminates power and health improvement rates.
I mean, at, at some point, you know, in addition to the design, you have to have a, you have a board, of course, practical manager, because a building will be over one point five million.
Right, yeah.
But you have the ability to control their involvement and not have it all been the same way that MSBA does.
I did have a question, I tried to, I lost my train of thought.
And the other thing about some of these spaces is that they're big, big open spaces, and then like broken down into like tiny little rooms. So that will create some questions in yourself.
Andy, you may mention that these grants, they asked the question that the MSBA could be involved, so through that you feel we're better off not involving them, better chance to get approved, like the thing?
Seems to me that the state is looking for projects that are more general ready. And you can afford to grant, be concerned.
So let the local school, whatever, do their thing and not involve the bigger entity.
The grades have to be spent in two-year, two-year program. And if we all agree, if we include MSBA, it would probably be, uh, two years.
Guys are comfortable opening for this school season? Okay, um, so what's being done about that?
Well, we do, I mean, I'm sure once the building's down, that'll help a lot, but like, there's electricity, there is running water right now. But, you know, the structure, kids. We're, we're not sure where we're gonna be with it yet. We know where we'd like to be, we just don't know. We just found out that the building's gonna, we have, we can knock the building down, so that kind of advances things.
Yeah.
All right.
So as long as the building's down and the, and the utilities are reestablished, then they'll be working out of that gas space. One of them will be in the secondary classroom, so the shop, the head house, the greenhouse, all of that will be functioning starting here. That's the, that's the goal.
Yeah, I had, I had had some discussed the same with, um, the open, he sort of run some samples and came back and said he would take them.
All right, I, suggestion, um, I think we need a little more discussion here internally, at least I do. Um, but I don't think we need pizza to take, to make fairness to them. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for your trouble.
Thank you very much. And, uh, your partner, I can remember her process.
Shelby.
Shelby, right.
Shelby, thank you, Shelby.
Yeah, it's a fun process, but unfortunately you have to. Oh, yeah. So it turns bad.
Thank you, Andy.
Before we go, can we just like, maybe some next meetings?
Sure, I think that we're, I'm on track for two weeks from now.
Yeah, yours, your planning is scheduled every two weeks, correct?
Kevin, are we able to bump our meeting back a week to sixteen? We have a commitment, the Abbott team has a, a day plan on the ninth. We get a meeting for the company here.
Are we trying to stay with Tuesdays as?
I think that works for, for the board. It's the only day that I have the entire administrative team available.
Okay, yeah, we can, maybe we can have some back and forth, then, you know, we get the diagram for the adjacencies of those spaces. Kind of put it in and comment it back, and hopefully we can maybe shortcut the process a little bit.
What, Andy?
I'd like to play on the sixteen.
I wouldn't, uh, yeah, could we do it earlier? Does that work for Tim and our change? We'll get to that.
Kevin, are we leaving four ten, should we just go to the call then? Oh, yeah.
Okay, um. Well, at least, I guess, yeah, that's probably most reasonable, all right. No, no, that's just guys, everything. And square footage in the morning first. Most mornings, right?
Well, yeah, get started before it shows up.
Good time to come on site. Okay, um, I will ask a question about opening up, slowly, still working that process out. When do you think you'll kind of have a plan to where they're gonna be, how they're gonna be, act line?
So I'm still thinking we'll have that there, rest of Washington building up. Uh, whether we take that slab out, the distribution. I want to, I want to keep there, I need to get it checked, and the slab, especially the electric ones that wants to, you know, transform. If we, if we're planning really to take a whole down, I'm hoping to keep that.
All right, so you have some parts you're still figuring out.
Yeah, I don't think it's lack of.
Well done. I think in my own thought, how are you taking it down?
I think we keep the slab, in this, in this scenario now, sorry. I think we keep the slab because I think you guys can job that backdoor access. It may be making more sense to be able to have equipment stored on the slab while we're working through this process. As long as your stuff is in a normal running place. Uh, but if that, for some reason, the utilities aren't up and running, we have space for it.
I think that was literally, we just disconnected that breaker off that front. So we just connected and everything's not broken.
All right.
We've got both associated building.
That was my next question.
Yeah. Uh, now Joe says, at first Joe Cook said, just go have it taken down. And then I saw him down, he thought it was good, well, it's in on. So, um, I'm gonna talk to him one more time, leave the slab, say this.
All right, um, who else are you gonna begin?
Uh, I had some name, I hadn't, I didn't call anybody since. It's, it's gonna be a huge difference if it's discussed this end, so I just want to.
All right, well, there's, there's a company on Canal Street that does abatement and demo.
A whole building?
I'm not sure, selective demolition, absolutely, uh, American environmental. They also have sister company, United Services, or United Building Services. They're worth checking out. Done a lot of work with them through the years. They're also MBE, WB, that matters at all. Probably not in our case because we're not having to meet any types of participation goals, I'm guessing, to this project.
I, I didn't understand why more discussed samples, not taking so much of that, that drywall and panel. All that stuff, all that's in this, I'll come back, thank you.
What? I guess that's it for today. Anything else?
But the other thing besides utilities is, what about furniture?
We got furniture.
Okay.
We got lots of furniture.
Yeah.
All stand up desks, go in there, get off.
Do we pick up the drafting tables?
Yeah.
So the electrical has first dibs on these drafting tables, but you may not want them, so that you'd have drafting. That's our dual purpose desk.
I have at least they draft.
Question that I had, I have to, you. Was I can front garage, Mark's classroom, head house? Would you prefer to be in the head house or would you prefer to be?
I've asked James that, I don't know if it's changed, I offered a lively space, some of the library space, for her to be in that area.
Space, but one of the things that has made us successful as a team to be close together. And kids really, the educational time, going to getting something ready for the day, being, um, close to that space and far away.
But it would be for your first, I agree, two or three classes of the day. So I can bring you over to the space and have you look at it, we can.
We'll fill it. Okay. In my mind, I, I.
While I'm here, I gotta.
First, we're like the head house, we're.
Talking about like.
And then the rest of the week, I'm, I'm done. We had a kid, I don't think it's. Too many kids. And then there's like, in the head house, no place to do, like there was a chalkboard behind the floor. But no place to do, um, any kind of.
Sure.
Is what's happening.
Yeah, so we have spaces that may not be ideal, but that's the situation we're in, but we have spaces. I'm not concerned about finding a home, James or Mark.
So it sounds like you have a vision in your head.
We have possibilities, yeah.
Good. That's, was a concern, thank you.
Because right now it's still a lot of stuff that we, like we've taken out a part of the, it's damaged, it's.
Gotta get all of it.
I prefer you a data space, to be honest, or, or to find another classroom. Because I think you're gonna limit the capabilities of the head house and what happens, but I do understand, I want also. If that is where you would prefer to be with Mark, if you guys can make it work, I'll honor that. I'm not gonna force you to go to a different space.
The hard part is like, it's a lot of time being. Just to get the mind of this kid. But it's gonna happen.
Do you want to head over there now?
Yeah. I'd like to head over.
Sure.